The Lemonster City Council Meeting is funded in part by DeCarulous Insurance Agency at Start the meeting with a salute to the flag. You'll all rise, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, let's see. All right, well, we'll conduct the public forum next. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council on the public forum? And a second time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council on the public forum? And a third and final time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council in the public forum? Hearing none, I will declare the public forum closed. We will now begin the actual special meeting with a roll call of the councilors in attendance, starting with Councilor Frida.
President.
Councilor Dombrowski.
Present.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Councilor Feckley. There you are, okay.
Present.
Council, Councilor Angelini.
Present.
Councilor Anger.
Present.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Councilor David Cormier.
Present.
And I shall be recorded as president. All nine members of the city council are in attendance. Next on our schedule are interviews of candidates referred by Ways and Means Committee. Before we get underway with that, I'm going to turn this over to the chairwoman of Ways and Means, Councilor Gail Feckley, just to bring us up to date as to how we got to this point in the process.
Okay, thank you very much, Council President Bledanza. So, as, as we discussed at the meeting on Monday evening, I'll reiterate, the Ways and Means Committee was given the task to review applicants for the Assistant City Clerk position, which had been recently become vacant. The position had been posted, and then when the posting was over, the Madam Clerk provided us with the applicants, and we set up a Ways and Means Committee meeting on January 20th to go over the applications. At the end of that meeting, we ran an executive session to discuss the, the applications and the applicants. At the end of that meeting, we decided on six candidates that we'd like to bring before us for interviews, and we met again on January 27 in a Ways and Means Committee meeting, and we interviewed those six applicants via go-to meeting. We asked them all the same questions and gave them basically the same amount of time, and at the end of that, that was again an executive session, and at the end of the executive session, we had a discussion and decided on the three candidates who we announced on Monday evening at the regular city council meeting to bring before the entire council at this special, special meeting this evening. The committee felt as though these three candidates were the most qualified, and we hope that you agree. I want to thank our committee, which consisted of myself, Councilor Frida, and Councilor Dombrowski, for their good work to bring these candidates before you this evening. I also want to thank Madam Clerk Caitlin Huffman for all of her assistance with protocol and logistics, et cetera, and I also want to thank the council president, Mark Bledanza, for all of his help during this process. I also, more importantly, want to thank our three final candidates, who I know the Ways and Means Committee is very pleased that we can present before the full council this evening for questions. So with that, Council President, I will turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Feckley, and thank you and your committee for all your hard work and efforts. And by the way, the other members of the Ways and Means Committee are Councilor Frida is the clerk, and Councilor John Dombrowski is the third member. At this time, I guess I would like to have each of the candidates give an opening statement. Madam Clerk, I suppose we could, do you have any particular preference, or Councilor Feckley, on how they present? Who goes first?
I believe that maybe the best, the best way to do it, Council President, would be alphabetically. I think that's probably the fairest.
Okay, so...
The alphabet can't be, can't be argued with, so I think that we could feel pretty comfortable doing that.
Okay, so let's see, we, who would be the, I guess it would be...
Christina Ellis.
That Ellis would be the first one, okay. So, candidates, starting with Christina Ellis, we're going to give you a few moments to introduce yourself to the council and to the public, give us a, an overview of yourselves and why you want this particular position, and how you think you'll be able to best apply your particular talents for the benefit of the city of Lemonster and in the job of Assistant City Clerk. So I'll start with Ms. Ellis.
Hello, thank you all for having me tonight. As you know, my name is Christina Ellis. I am, I stepped into the position of Head Paralegal for a small law firm in Athol, which also had a location in Winchton. There I was kind of the face of the company. I handled the day-to-day as well as supervising the other staff members and kind of handling any situations that arose and handled the monthly billing. Let's see, while working there, I also continued to assist our Winchton office with any workload that they had, that they needed assistance with, whether it be real estate, family law, any of the various forms of law that we did. So I was handling work for both offices. Prior to that, I worked for the Alcohol Credit Union doing customer service. As I had said in my video, which I believe you had the chance to view, I was tasked with handling our online credit union, so that kind of gave me the chance to kind of step outside of my comfort zone a little bit and stretch my legs on stepping into that kind of leadership and management role, which I then was able to expand, working as Head Paralegal for the law firm. I am very much interested in the Assistant Clerk position because it seems to me to be a very multifaceted position, and it would allow me the opportunity to kind of build on the experience and skills of leadership and management that I've started kind of appealing, and I'm looking to grow more into that kind of leadership management role, and I think that this position is perfect for that, and I, I believe that the previous experience and my client relation skills would be ideal experience for this position, and I'm, I'm very confident that I would excel in the role. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Ellis. The next candidate would be Lila Fernandez.
Hi, my name is Lila Fernandez. I am the lease housing manager for the Lemonster Housing Authority. I've been with the Housing Authority between Pittsburgh and Lemonster for about seven years now, and I, we work with a diverse population there. I do the rent calculations, we get the files ready when the auditors are going to view the files, we speak with landlords, we speak with vendors, we assure that the tenants can afford the units, that the inspections are done, that they have the lease certificates for the units when they have children under six, or are pregnant, or over sixty-two years old. I've worked with the customer relations for over twenty years. I've worked with Diversify Medical in the medical field with medical equipment, in qualifying the equipment to assure that the insurance will pay for the equipment. I've also worked for the Health Alliance in the medical records department, and I've also have worked in legal aid. So I have over twenty years' experience working with the public in, with a diverse population, and the goals that I have for this position, and I feel that I am, you know, would do great in this position, is due to my experience with the public, with the elderly, with young disabled, with different ethnic groups, and also would increase and master the skills in a widely range in this community setting, working for the city hall, because that opens the door to other community services that I may not be aware of at the moment, working at the Housing Authority.
Okay, are you...
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very, thank you very much, Ms. Fernandez. And the last candidate to present will be Diane Riordan.
Good evening, city council members in Lemonster, and I want to thank you for considering me for this very important position in your city clerk's office. I've worked in the office of the Town Clerk of Lancaster for nearly seven years, beginning as an Assistant Town Clerk, and the last three years as the Town Clerk, and what I bring to this position in Lemonster is all that experience that I've learned by working in Lancaster. But what I also bring is a curiosity and excitement to go into a bigger municipality where I come from. I live in Pittsburgh, I've come from Pittsburgh, and I've worked in Pittsburgh. I've worked in the purchasing office, and I've worked as the recording secretary of the school committee, and I've worked for federal government with the FBI and the IRS. So I have done a lot of government jobs. I've managed eighteen elections in the seven years that I've been in Lancaster with early voting, which wasn't even as hard as dodging Netflix that was filming on my town green during an election day. So we have been through a lot in Lancaster, so it's been a learning curve, and it's been fun, and it's time for me to spread my wings and go in to work in the city clerk's office with Caitlin and just learn what differences the city brings than the town. But I hope you consider me, and I thank you again for considering me one of your finalists.
Thank you very much, Ms. Riordan. I am now, at this juncture, going to open this part of the process to questions from the city councilors, and I would like to give the courtesy to the Ways and Means Committee to ask their questions first, and I would start with Councilor Feckley.
Thank you, Council President. What I, I do want to mention, one other thing that I did not mention in my introduction was that the council was presented with five-minute videos that each one of the candidates was asked to submit, so that they would have the ability to see them, see the candidates as we had, and be able to, you know, place the name with the face. So I did want to mention, mention that.
Thank you, Councilor Feckley.
So, you're welcome. So my question would be, obviously, for Ms. Ellis. And Ms. Ellis, I'll be brief because I already, I already had the opportunity to, to interview you, and I'm anxious for the rest of the council to do so as well. So you have worked for the past several years as a paralegal, and I myself started my early professional career working in a lawyer's office, so I certainly know how many balls you have to be able to juggle in doing that. What I'd like you to discuss, just very briefly, is how would you take that kind of ball-juggling that I'm sure you're doing in a busy law office, and transition that to a city clerk's office? And how, how do you feel as though you would be able to use your skill sets to be able to do that?
Well, like you said, working in a, a law office, it, there is a lot going on all at once, so I have, I feel very much mastered being able to kind of bounce from file to file to telephone call to email. You've got to kind of stay on, on your toes and take things as they come your way. When I stepped into the Head Paralegal role, that was, it was very new for me, but I, I kind of really kind of flourished and really kind of learned how to manage and, and take that kind of leadership, which was kind of new to me. So I've, I've kind of gotten used to saying, okay, this is what's going on now, however, this is going on too. So it's, it's a lot of notes and a lot of sticky notes everywhere, just to keep track of what's going on, and making sure that everybody is on the same page as to what's going on. That way, even if for some reason I was unavailable, whoever picked up that file message knew exactly what was going on. And I, and that communication is very vital into making sure things go along smoothly. So I think that's a huge aspect in being able to kind of manage the multiple things that may come your way, is making sure that, you know, there's that communication, and making sure everybody's on the same page, and is aware as to what's going on, and I think that's going to transition into this position as well, is communication is always key. Making sure that what I have going on, other people know what's going on, vice versa. That way, we're there to kind of help each other and to make sure everything that needs to be done is done in a very timely manner.
Okay, thank you very much, and I also want to thank you for being here this evening. And, you know, this is a little bit daunting, but you'll get through it, and we're sorry that we can't meet face-to-face, but hopefully everybody, you know, got a little bit of taste of who you are from your video, so thanks again, and so...
Thank you.
You're welcome, Christina. I'll pass this back on to the Council President.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Feckley. Next in line, I would ask Councilor Frida if she has any questions for any of the candidates?
Actually, you know, we had the opportunity, as the chair mentioned, so I'm going to defer my time till maybe the end, but the other councilors have their time.
All right, fair enough, Councilor Frida, we'll come back to you if you have questions, for sure.
Thank you.
Then I'll, the last member of Ways and Means would be Councilor Dombrowski.
Yeah, thank you. Similar to Councilor Frida, we, you know, we had an opportunity to interview all the candidates, so I would defer likewise to the other councilors to ask the questions they'd like to ask.
All right, fair enough, we'll reserve any time that you need later on if new questions are prompted, or questions are prompted. All right, so I, I thank you very much, Councilor Dombrowski. I will open it up to the council generally. Is there any member of the council that has, would like to pose a question to any of the candidates?
The President, Councilor David Cormier.
All right, I heard Councilor Cormier, David Cormier, and who, who else did I hear?
Shalfo Zephyr.
All right, Councilor, I will allow Mr. Cormier to proceed, and as soon as he's done, Councilor Shalfo Zephyr, you will be next. Go ahead, Councilor Cormier.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and welcome, you know, all three candidates. You know, thank you very much for your interest in, in this position, and I do wish we could be meeting differently, but unfortunately, the, the times don't dictate that right now. I did watch all of the videos that were sent, and so I certainly have a face with the name, and you all did a wonderful job, I must say, you know, in presenting yourself and your case as to why you think you're best for this position, but I just, I'm, I like to be fair, so I think I'm going to ask the same question to all three candidates, and, you know, I, I guess I'll just go in order by the way that the interviews went, so I'll, I'll start with Christina, and I guess I kind of put everybody on the spot for an ask, you know, this is an important position that deals with public, there can be conflict at times, there can be members of the public that might not agree with something, you know, a notice they get in the mail, maybe, you know, and an issue with their dog license, or, you know, something is wrong with a marriage certificate, or something of that nature. And, you know, we all deal with the public from time to time, and, and we know that, you know, not everybody can be pleasant to deal with at times. You know, so, you know, I would ask if, if, you know, Christina, if you've ever been in a situation, you know, with a customer, where there was a conflict, if anything, you know, comes to mind, that, that you've been in a situation where there was a conflict, and, you know, I, I understand you might not want to name names and get real personal, but just a general summary of what happened and, and how, how you worked to resolve that, how did you deal with it?
Okay, actually, I have an example of that. Athol is a rather small town, so it's kind of a situation where everybody knows everybody situation. It was, I had just stepped into the position at the Athol location, and a gentleman came in to have a divorce consultation. It turned out to be somebody who was very familiar with myself and family members, so out of courtesy to him, obviously, that's kind of a difficult situation for him and our office to be in, so we felt in that case, the best way to handle it is we referred him to another local attorney who handled divorce cases as well, to make sure that he got the service that he deserved, but that he was comfortable in the situation. As we figured, you know, knowing myself and my family personally, it was probably an uncomfortable situation for him, so we felt this was the best course of action to make sure that he got exactly what he needed.
Okay, all right, very good. And just one other question, and then I'll move to Lila. In any of your experience, have you had to manage at anybody working directly, or reporting to you directly, and if so, how many at any given time?
It was a, it was a very small law firm, so in the Athol office, it was myself, another paralegal, and the attorney. The other paralegal did report to me, I was her superior, so it was, it was just her, it was just a small law firm, so I was her supervisor, and she did come to me with any questions or concerns or anything along those lines.
Okay, very good. And I'll ask the same question if I could, the same two questions to, to Lila. If you need me to repeat them, I can, or if you, if you remember what I asked, you can just go ahead on the first one and then move to the second one?
If, if you can please repeat them.
Okay, sure. So the first question was, you know, in any of your work experience, did you ever encounter, you know, a conflict, maybe with a customer or somebody that you were dealing with? And, you know, just a brief description of what the conflict was and, and how you, how you worked to get it resolved?
So with Lemonster Housing, we do the calculations, so we let them know what they're going to pay for rent. We also qualify them for a new unit, that means we have to qualify them with the new rent, and if they, if it's affordable for them. Also, we have to, with the landlords, we have to approve the rents that they are requesting, and sometimes they either asking too high for the guidelines that we have to follow, and if someone is, feels, you know, a tenant, a client feels that they're paying, you know, that their rent's too high, then they would, they would question that, and when they either call the office or they come into the office, they're wowed up either because I didn't qualify their, their rent that they're requesting, or they feel that they're paying too much rent based out of their income. So what I usually do at Lemonster Housing is that I listen to them first and see, you know, what they're presenting me, and then I have them give me a list of their income, because it's based out of income, just so that we, we can assure that I have the income, the right income, and the income that they're giving me, and everything's accurate. At that time, I have them explain, you know, they will explain to me their situation, what their income is, why they feel that they're paying too much rent, or I miscalculated, or why I didn't approve the contract rent. At that time, I would listen to what they have to say, and then I would explain to them how the rent is calculated, and go step by step with them. I have them in a, in a separate room, and I bring out the files, have the, we have an Excel sheet that explains how each portion of their rent is, is calculated, so based out of their income, their deductions, what the contract rent is, and what the utility rent is. And by explaining to them each step and having them see how I get the number, then by the end, then they're understanding why their rent is so much, or even though they may not be happy that it's so much, but they do leave with an understanding of how that rent is calculated. To increase the rent for a landlord, as we know, things are expensive, and cost of living is very expensive, so to be able to approve a rent, we have to do a rent reasonable, and if someone's asking over the payment standard, I would explain to them why that rent, it's not approved, and explain, and break it down to them of why we have a payment standard in utilities, and if, why if the rent's too high, it puts the client at risk of not being able to afford the unit. And... And some of them leave okay with the situation, and they're willing to come down on the rent. And some of them just choose to say, no, they're not going to participate. And I find, as explaining to them and kind of breaking it down, how the program works and how I get the numbers, it may not be what they want to hear, but they do leave with a satisfactorial reasoning of why those numbers happen.
Okay, very good. So, sounds like in your position, you've had to, you know, diffuse a situation maybe a time or two. It certainly isn't easy to tell people your rent is going up and things of that nature in your current position.
Exactly.
So, the other question I have as well is, in any of your work experience, have you had anybody who reported to you directly? And if so, how many at any given time? How many people reported to you directly at any given time, if any?
Yeah, when I worked at Diversified Medical, it's the durable medical equipment. They were on Mill Street. I had, I was the manager of the office there. And I had three, one customer service, one, they, at that time, it was called a store clerk. And then technicians, like the drivers that would deliver the equipment to the patients. So, I would say about four, four or five.
Okay, so it was a smaller type operation then, almost the same size as the city clerk's office? Okay.
Yes, Diversified, yes, was that office in the Lemmester site was smaller, because Life Supply had bought them, but they were out of Chicopee, Mass. And they, they were bigger over there in that office. But the Lemmester, it was, it was a smaller.
Very, very good. Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome.
And Riordan, at this time, I'll ask you the same two questions. If you need me to repeat them, I can, or if you remember them, you can go ahead and answer them?
I can remember them. This is the benefit of going last, so you kind of can remember these things. Conflict, how to handle them. And being in the clerk's office for seven years, we've had our share of conflicts, whether it be with residents or potential nominees for town meetings, or town election, I should say. So, one way to handle it is that I try not to get wrapped into the conflict. Everybody gets upset in our lives. We've all been upset. And for, from my view, is if you remain calm and you handle with diplomacy, the outcome is usually better. So, with all the years I've spent, I've tried to learn, and my biggest mantra is treat people the way you would want to be treated. You don't want to brush people off. You don't want to make their important issue non-important. It's important to them, so it's important. So, a lot, other issues that we faced this past year was COVID. And that brought in a whole new element of how we were going to get the election done, how we were going to get early voting done. We're a small town, but we still had to approach this with safety, with input from Board of Health, emergency management, police department. That went straight through all four elections that we had, plus our town meeting, which was a whole nother ball of wax. So, it was planning, and it was making sure that people felt safe enough to come out and do their diligence for their town. So, we managed a very good outdoor, drive-in style town meeting at the fairgrounds. And it was not an easy task, but it was a fun task, and it ended up being very well received by the town. And they want to do it that way all the time, even when COVID's gone. So, that was a win. People, so people that I have managed has been down to one person. I have one assistant town clerk, but I do manage all the election workers. And that goes for early voting workers and election. And I don't, I guess I wouldn't say I manage my board of registrars, but in some ways you do. You kind of make them aware and make them aware of everything. So, working with Melissa, she's been great. My assistant is fabulous, and I work shoulder to shoulder with her. She has learned everything alongside me, and that's the way I like to mentor somebody.
Okay, great. Sounds great. I appreciate, you know, all three of you, once again, you know, taking interest. And, Mr. President, I am good for now. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Cormier. Councilor Shalfo Zephyr, you were next.
Great, thank you very much. I do want to say to each of the candidates, thank you very much for joining us this evening. And I was very impressed with each of your video presentations. I think that's a very hard thing to do. You all came in under five minutes. I was watching the time as I was watching each of the videos, and I thought you each did an excellent job. So, I just wanted to say that I was very impressed. So, I begin with Ms. Ellis. And my first question is, and I'll ask this to each of the candidates, why, what is it about this particular job, the assistant clerk's job, that interests you? Why this job?
Well, I'm looking for a career that's going to offer challenges and give me the opportunity to kind of continuously grow and improve myself in a personal and professional manner. I'm really looking to work more on improving and growing my leadership and management skills. And I think that this would be the ideal position for that. I think this is really going to give me the opportunity to kind of learn more about how to manage things that are, I'm not so familiar with, and to kind of take more of that leadership and managerial role on. And I'm really looking for something that gives me that challenge and kind of pushes me outside my comfort zone.
Okay, well, thank you for that. It certainly is a challenging job. I think the interesting thing about the assistant clerk's position and the city clerk's position is that it's both a very public-facing position, because you're dealing with the public on a variety of issues. But then there's also a lot of internal support, because you're providing support to nine city councillors, as well as other people in the office. So, could you just talk a little bit about your experience, I guess, in terms of supporting other people in an organization?
I'm sorry, what was the end of the question? My phone cut out, and I didn't hear that.
Oh, sorry about that. Could you just talk a little bit about your work supporting people in an organization? Because that's a big part of the assistant clerk's job.
Well, most of the, most of the support that we offer, obviously being in client-based industries, is to the clients. We did a lot of real estate at the law firm, so there was a lot of support with the different banks and lenders that we worked with and the real estate agents. Definitely a wide group of people to work with. I think the biggest support, though, comes with getting the bank from start of a transaction to that, that closing. There's just so many turning wheels and so many things that have to be accomplished. And especially with last year, for whatever reason, when the pandemic hit, real estate just exploded. So, a lot of the banks were very overwhelmed with the amount of people who were buying and selling real estate. So, it was very vital for us to kind of take some of that burden off of them to make sure that their customers were happy and to make sure that things got done in a timely manner. Because a lot of people were selling their house, but they were also buying at the same time. So, it was very important that we offered that support to make sure that those transactions happened simultaneously. So that way, somebody didn't sell a house and then wind up homeless without having a house to buy. So, it was very important that we be there and kind of be almost the hand holder for the clients when the bank wasn't able to kind of give them the answers or the guidance that they were looking for. So, that's kind of what we did in this, is we kind of took their hand from the start, and we held it all the way to the end and said, you know, it's frustrating, but we're going to get there because we are working together as a team. And we got there. I mean, there were bumps in the road, but we got people to where they wanted to be, and they left us at the end of the day happy. And that was all that really kind of mattered, is making sure that they got what they needed. And the banks and the lenders, you know, they got a, they got a recurring customer because we helped support them and helped them overcome the challenges that came through the transaction.
Thank you for that. Real estate transactions, I think, can be very, they're overwhelming. There's so much, so many details, so much paperwork for people that are trying to, you know, get through that process. So, I appreciate, I appreciate your comments on that. Thank you very much. So, Ms. Fernandez, can I ask you the same question? The first question was, what about this particular job, the assistant city clerk's job, interests you? Why this job?
The reason for this job is I feel that with my experience working with the community and my experience with Lemmester Housing, which you service elderly, it's elderly, young, disabled, applicants that are not disabled, it's just a variation of a lot of different people that come in. I like the city clerk's position, because it, that opens the door to a wider range of the community and opens the door to more information that I'm not aware of, like for the Lemmester Housing Authority. You, you know, you learn how to, you learn how to service our clients and their needs. And you give them information, you help them out with their, their application, with how to, you know, calculate the rent. But with the City Hall, it opens that up even more. So, by the end of, you know, by the time your, your experience in that position, you are knowledgeable in a more wide range of the community services. And that is, I like that, because I have experience with medical, medical equipment, the housing, with legal aid, when I worked in legal aid, and this kind of fills in the gap. So, that's why I feel that, and this job interests me because of what it opens, the doors that opens up for me in learning more of the community and the services that it has.
Thank you for that. And then in terms, it seems, based on what you said, that you have a lot of customer service experience. You deal with a lot of people, certainly. And how about internally? Do you provide support within the, within the housing authority for other staff people? Is there any of that element to your job?
In my particular position right now, I mean, that we help each other, yes, we do that. But in our, in our position is mainly, like, I have a caseload, and my caseload is almost about 300. And it keeps you busy with, with the clients, you know, the clients that I have. We do work as a team. You know, if my coworker needs help, you know, I step in, you know, she'll, she'll ask me, and then I will help her. I like to show, like, if I'm helping my coworker, I like, the way I like to do it is that not only do I show them, I have them, you know, we can do a print, print, print screen, so that that way, when, when they're doing whatever tasks that they're asking, they have it there so that they feel, okay, I can do this. But most, most of my position is really working with the public. Like I said, I have almost 300 caseloads. So, it's very, it's very busy between the inspections, landlords, clients, you know, trying to lease up new tenants. We do offer a lot of information, like I will go in the, you know, in the internet and get information if someone's looking for information, phone numbers, like for the security office, RCAP, which is a muster, RCAP solution. So, we do a lot of that work, and I mail it to them, I email it to them, I give it to them over the phone. Kind of walk our clients step by step on how to obtain the income verifications that is required.
All right, well, thanks, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Ms. Riordan.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So, moving on to Ms. Riordan. So, my question for you is a little bit different, because you, I mean, I think earlier you said that, you know, you were interested in moving to a larger municipality, and that's why Lemonster would make sense for you. But I guess my question for you is, after being the assistant town clerk and then the town clerk currently, you know, moving into Lemonster as the assistant clerk, I mean, how, how do you feel about going from being the person in charge to being, you know, the assistant, I guess, the second, second in command?
Yeah, that's, first of all, as I've always handled things, I work shoulder to shoulder with my assistant now, and I would anticipate that to happen in Lemonster also. So, as I was looking for more experience in elections and recounts, I asked Caitlin in 2019 in November whether I could come and experience her municipal election, because I didn't have one, of course, in November. So, she liked it, the idea, and I spent the afternoon in her office, and I met her staff, and I assisted her numerous wardens and clerks at her many precincts. And I was impressed with how organized everything was. And I knew that if a position like this ever opened up, that I would like to work with someone like Caitlin. And so, when Lemonster was chosen for the audit this past November, I jumped at the chance to volunteer. I'm always looking to better myself, to get more experience. I'd like to become a certified municipal clerk, and I have one year of the New England Municipal Clerk Institute under my belt. That's a week away. Well, I mean, I spent a week away in 2019, 2020, it was canceled. I have two years to go, and then I can become a certified municipal clerk. And while, yes, I'm a town clerk in Lancaster. 2020, I accomplished everything in 2020 that I probably would never have been able to accomplish if I weren't faced with such, with the pandemic and so many obstacles in my way. I feel like I conquered it. Now I want to conquer something different. And I'm leaving Lancaster in such capable hands with my assistant. She's more than ready, she's very capable, and she's confident to take on the role, at least as acting town clerk. So, it's, it's also a step up for her, too. So, it's, it's perfect for both of us. This opportunity came at the right time for both of us.
Okay, well, thank you for that. And then, you know, the public facing and then the internal part. Do you provide supports of the Select Board in Lancaster, doing the agendas and minutes and things of that nature?
No, they, they have their own assistant. The Board of Sargent has their own administrative assistant. But every department, as you know, in cities is the same. The town clerk takes care of many different facets of the town. Most people need to come to us for many things. And also, we're the web people. We, we're the one, my office is the one that takes care of the website. And so, you deal with every department, every, even the library and everybody. So, I, prioritizing is a big thing for that, is a big, something that is necessary. You need to be able to prioritize what needs to be done, especially agendas and those sorts of things. And minutes also, we post the minutes to the website also. So, we, we deal with every boarding committee and every department.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that. Mr. President, I am done for the moment. I may have other questions later, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilor Shalfo Zephyr. Is there another councillor who hasn't spoken so far that has a question? Councilor Arndt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to thank the three candidates for their time tonight. You all have very diversified backgrounds, but I'd like to ask three questions. And I'm wanting to change the sequence around so that no- I'm wanting to change the sequence around so that no one will ever be first and no one will ever be last. And the first question I'm going to address to Ms. Fernandez is, coming into this position, what do you see as your biggest challenge?
My biggest challenge coming into this position? I see that the biggest challenge would be getting familiar with the evening meetings and how that process works, how those are, you know, dealt with, how they're handled, and how it all works. I see that my, you know, a challenge, I wouldn't say the biggest challenge, I would say a challenge, getting familiar and just knowing the processes of the evening meetings, since they are happened there every month.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Ms. Reardon.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Ms. Reardon, what would your answer be to that question? Your biggest challenge?
Probably the, I suppose it's the enormity. So likening it to what I handle now, we put three polls in Lancaster in the seven years I've been there. I'm sure light polls go up many, many more times in Lemonster. So it's more the multiplication of what I know into a much bigger, bigger spot. But that doesn't, it's not intimidating, it's rather exciting, actually.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And Ms. Ellis, what would your answer be?
I think that my biggest challenge is going to be, I don't have the experience of the elections, so I think that's where I'm going to have a little bit of a challenge. But I pick up on things rather quickly, and I think that once I kind of get the hang of it, I'll be able to excel and kind of roll with it, and before long, I'll be, hopefully, a master of it all.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And for the next question, I'd like to start with Ms. Reardon. What is your biggest asset if you take this position?
My biggest asset is probably familiarity with the voter registration computer, entering vital records. Because I have all that familiarity, that will help me. So that's part of where I can hit the ground running. There's many other aspects of this job that I certainly will have to learn, but at least those, the basics of those jobs, I have under me. So that's probably what I bring the most.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And Ms. Ellis, what would your answer be?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Yeah, your biggest asset, I believe is what I ask. No, I'm sorry. Go ahead, your biggest asset.
It's a little bit of a silly answer, but my patience. I'm a very patient person, and I think that's very important in any line of work, especially a line of work where you're working with the public on a daily basis. I think it requires a lot of patience and kind of that kind, caring ear, and I think that's something that I have just an abundance of, is just that kind of patience and that kind of care. And I think that's going to be the thing that is going to be my kind of, my drive, my go-to thing.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And Ms. Fernandez?
My biggest, the assets would be my experience with the community, working with the public, and also that I'm bilingual. That's what I would, my assets would be.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And I'll start the last question with Ms. Ellis. And in a few short words, how would your former associates describe you?
I think I'm very hardworking. My work ethic is one of the most important things to me, and I think that they would speak very highly of the work that I put forward. I mean, the work that we put out there to people is what they see and remember about us. So I think that they would say that I'm very much caring about my work and making sure I provide the highest quality work possible, and that I'm very supportive and I handle situations very well. I'm great with people. My years of working in customer service, I've kind of learned that, you know, everybody always has stuff going on, so the best you can do is kind of be there for them in those situations and kind of help them and get them through it. So I think that former coworkers would definitely say that kind of my personality and the way that I handle situations is one of the things that they always will kind of remember and kind of say is one of my strong suits.
Well, thank you very much. And Ms. Fernandez, you know, what would your former associates, I'm sorry, how would your former associates describe you in a few short words?
I would say detailed, hardworking, and I take the time to assist and refer my clients. And I also like to learn and do better the skills that I have in my position.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Reardon, your comments?
I think that they would consider me dependable. I've been loyal, and I'm ambitious, and I'm willing to learn. And I guess that would about cover it.
Okay, well, thank you all very much. I mean, you have, your answers were great, I appreciate it. And I am finished, Mr. President, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Arndt. Is there any other counselor that wishes to ask some questions?
Counselor Angelini, Mr. President?
Very well, Counselor Angelini, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. I have one question for each candidate, and in the interest of fairness, if I go in alphabetical order, I would certainly understand if Ms. Ellis would like to take a moment before she answers. The question is this, if, I'm going to reverse the roles here a bit. If you were asked to interview someone to replace you in your current employment position, what qualities and abilities would you be looking for in that candidate to ensure that the business or organization continued to function as efficiently as it had when you held that position?
I think one of the most important qualities that they would have to have is their ability to handle people. Working with the public, you never know what's going to come your way, so I think it's very important to be able to kind of keep a cool head in situations. I mean, you're going to get yelled at a lot, unfortunately, and to be able to kind of handle that with a cool head and diffuse the situation, I think those are, that is something that is absolutely a vital skill that I would want somebody stepping into that position to have, to be able to take somebody who's screaming at you for whatever reason and kind of talk them off of that ledge and get them to where they need to be and help them solve the situation that they have going on. So it would be very important for me that they have that, that they can work with people and be able to kind of comfort them and give them the care that they need.
Thank you. Ms. Fernandez?
Yes.
Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I'm good with this one, thank you.
You're welcome.
In this, in my position, if I were to turn, you would have to be detailed, priorities, so you'd have to, you have to know and manage priorities. Deadlines is a big thing, organizational, multitasking, and the clients. You'd have to be able to speak with them and understand where they're coming from, even if we can't always give them what they want or want to hear. So those skills are very important, to be able to manage my caseload, which is almost 300, like I said, efficiently and meeting those deadlines as we, like, from my position, I have to make sure the annuals are done every month. I have so many annuals that have to get done before a certain date so that, you know, we don't get penalized, because these are federal funds that we're distributing.
Thank you very, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And lastly, Ms. Reardon, and again, if you'd like me to repeat the question, I'd be happy to do so.
No, I think I'm all set. I think that for someone coming into my office, organization is key, because there's a lot of timelines and there's a lot of time constraints that, especially during elections and deadlines. So you'll want to be organized. Attention to detail. So when you're sending out nomination papers or election results, attention to detail is key. And after a long day like an election day that begins anywhere around 4:30 a.m., it's not an easy task to have that attention to detail. It's preparation. It's preparation to know that this is coming, anticipation that it's coming, and you get through it somehow or another. You manage to do it year after year. Patience with not only your coworkers and the residents, just with people on the phone, with vendors, with everyone. Patience is key. Transparency. So if you're going to do one thing for one person, you're going to do it forever and ever. So once you set that precedent, you know that that's the way it's going to be handled. So transparency and clarity are key in the clerk's office, so that things can go smoothly, so that you're not making up your rules as you go. If you have the rules to go by, it makes your life a lot easier. So that would be it.
All right. Thank you very much. No further questions, Mr. President?
Thank you very much, Counselor Angelini. I think the only person we haven't given an opportunity yet to is Counselor Pauline Cormier. Do you have any questions, Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry, I'm still suffering a little of the after effects, so I lose my voice later in the day.
Okay.
My question would be to each is how, how would you handle a person of authority as far as if you're instructed to do something by, in this case, the, you would be supervised by Kaitlyn, but what if you had a conflicting request from another member of the staff, a number, a member of the city council? How would you handle that kind of an issue? And I would go, I guess, in reverse order, if Ms. Reardon would like to go first and take, obviously take a couple of minutes if you need that.
Sure. So conflicting directives, I guess, would be the title of this one?
Yes, yes.
I think, once again, the transparency and clarity is key. So if you're told by one superior to do it one way and another superior to do it another, especially being new, you can get away with it a lot more when you're new, is to sit down and say, I'm unsure as to how I should progress with this. I would have both parties with me, and I would say, I want to make everybody happy. So is, I don't want to do anything wrong to get Kaitlyn in trouble, and I certainly don't want to say no to another superior. So I would look for clarity probably from Kaitlyn first, because she will be in the office with me, and she would have had experience with this. So that's probably how I would handle it. I would like to sit down with two parties and be able to have a compromise. That would be the easiest way, in my opinion.
Thank you. Ms. Fernandez?
I would say I would go to my direct supervisor and then run it by my direct supervisor, and not that I would not help another authority figure, but I would go to my supervisor, let them, you know, explain to them, you know, consult it with them, and then so that that, my direct supervisor can consult and direct if, you know, can stop doing something for my direct supervisor and go help another authority. I would say I would go to my direct supervisor and seek the guidance of how she wants me to handle that, you know, stop what I'm doing to go help another authority.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And Ms. Ellis?
I would go to my direct supervisor first and explain the situation, and then I think the best course of action would be to have all parties kind of sit down and see if there was perhaps a middle ground that would satisfy everybody. And that way, everybody kind of walks away a winner in that situation, and what needs to be done gets done.
Thank you. And thank all three of you. I found your videos to be excellent, your resumes to all be impressive, and I wish all three of you the best of luck.
Thank you.
I have nothing further, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier. A lot of good questions by all of the counselors. I know that two members of Ways and Means deferred. Does Counselor Dombrowski or Counselor Frida have a question at this time?
Mr. President, Counselor Dombrowski?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Claire.
No, go ahead, John.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions at this time. I think, you know, all three candidates have done an excellent job, and the videos were excellent. But I have asked a lot of questions already, and I don't have anything further at this time.
Very well. Thank you, Counselor Dombrowski. Counselor Frida, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just, thank you, Mr. President. I just have one basic question for all three, and it doesn't matter which order because it's a, it's a specific question. So I'll start with Christine. Have you ever applied for a municipal position before?
I think this is the first time that I've applied for a municipal position. No, I don't believe that I have.
Okay, thank you. Lila, have you?
I have, yes.
Okay. And Diane?
Yes, I have also.
Okay. All right. I'll just reserve the rest of our comments when we have a discussion during the meeting. Thank you.
That's all, Counselor Frida? Okay. So I think every counselor has an opportunity or has had at least one opportunity to ask a question of the candidates. Are there any other additional questions? A lot of good questions, by the way. I applaud all of you. You know, of course, again, the work of the Ways and Means Committee to narrow the field. Any additional questions by any counselor?
President Padilla, this is Counselor Feckley.
Yes, Counselor Feckley, you have the floor.
I just wanted, I just wanted to make plain that at the beginning of the meeting, I guess I didn't realize that we weren't going to be going individually, so I don't want Lila and Diane to think that I didn't have questions for them, but I did. However, during the line of questioning, there were very similar questions, and I did get an idea of what the answer to my questions would be. So I just want them to know that I certainly had a question for them, I wasn't leaving them out, okay? So that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Feckley. Any additional questions by any counselor? Okay, I'll ask one more time. Any counselor have an additional question for one or more of the candidates? Thank you very much for all of your questions. We are now at the point where the council can enter into a discussion relative to the merits of the various candidates, or I could entertain a motion if a motion gets seconded. a discussion relative to the merits of the various candidates or I could entertain a motion if a motion gets seconded.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion. Um, and then, you know, obviously after that, we'll have a discussion on it. But I'd like to, at this point, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, that we, uh, hire, uh, Diana, Diane Reardon for the position.
Okay. Uh, the motion's before us to, uh, hire Diane Reardon. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. I got Counselor Angelini, uh, is the second, um, to that motion. Um, having a motion made and seconded, uh, is there a discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. Counselor David Cormier.
Please proceed, Counselor.
Thank you very much. Um, so I'd like to, you know, explain why I've, um, I've chosen, uh, Diane Reardon. Um, first of all, let me just start by saying that I think all three of these candidates were absolutely wonderful and, and they all certainly bring, could bring a dynamic to, to the job that, um, you know, would, would, would be an asset to the city clerk's office. Um, but I, I think there's a very, very clear, um, distinction, you know, be, between one of these candidates and, and the other two, and, and that is experience. So, you know, the question here is, you know, do we, do we want to groom someone? You know, that could be, you know, an amazing assistant city clerk? Um, or, or do we want someone that can walk in there, um, you know, the day they start and, and just be ready to go, you know, with all the experience, you know, on issue licenses and marriage licenses, um, you know, death certificates, birth certificates, everything that goes on in a city clerk's office, you know, uh, minister an election for that matter, you know? Um, I, I think at this, I think at this juncture, it's very important that we have the experience in that office. Um, I, I think, you know, the, the current city clerk, um, you know, needs that right now. I, I think it would be very difficult to try to administer all of the functions of the office and train someone, uh, at the same time. I just don't think that the city clerk's office is in a position to do that right at this very moment. Um, and even though the, you know, the city clerk is, uh, you know, there's, there's, there's no issues that, you know, we know of. We never know when something happens and, and, and the city clerk can't be there. We need somebody in the office that can perform all these functions. And, you know, if God forbid the city clerk was, was out and had some of a, a long-term medical or anything of that nature, um, and we needed someone to run an election, we, we can't have somebody learning on the job. And, and I feel very, very comfortable, uh, that Ms. Reardon has plenty of experience to carry forward all the pieces of the job on day one. Um, and I, I just think it's clear that she would be a huge asset to, uh, office. And, and I, I, you know, I'm, I'm looking forward, I'm hoping that we can get a, um, you know, a, uh, a positive vote on her. I, I think, I really think she'd be a very, very huge asset to the city of Lomond Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier. Is there additional discussion by any counselor?
Counselor Angelini?
Go ahead, Counselor Angelini. You have the floor.
Um, well firstly, I, I think it's important, uh, to recognize the Ways and Means Committee for the exceptional job, uh, in fact, the yeoman's job in bringing forward three extremely accomplished, talented applicants who, um, all have distinguished careers, um, currently. Um, after carefully reviewing the resumes of each of the applicants and watching the five-minute, uh, video, I can tell you it was a very difficult decision. Um, but I would have to echo some of Counselor Cormier's, um, statements that I think some past experience in the clerk's office is extremely important, um, in filling this position. And, and, and then, God forbid, the clerk becomes incapacitated. Uh, we need someone who has the ability, um, to pick up that role, uh, immediately. And, um, and again, it, it's, it's a difficult decision, not in choosing the candidate, but in, uh, in denying two others the opportunity. It was very, very difficult. And, uh, um, I thank all, all three for the time and, and effort that they put into this. And, uh, I'll, I'll yield the floor.
Very well. Thank you, Counselor Angelini, for your comments. Is there any additional, uh, discussion by other counselors?
Uh, Mr. President, uh, uh, point of order, actually.
Yes, okay. Go ahead, Counselor Frida.
Point, point of order, just in a sense of, uh, clarity. Um, I guess I was kind of under the impression that to go back to Ways and Means. Um, I'm, I'm not sure, uh, of the discussion that we probably would have had as a, as a subcommittee going back, uh, after the questions. And I, I'm a little concerned that, uh, we've done no reference checking. Um, that wasn't part of, of, uh, our process to this point. I don't know if the chair has a different position than I have on that. Um, but I guess that was just what I was kind of thinking was going to be the next step. Is, is, uh, we would have time to at least check references and, uh, have a discussion about what, how the counsel felt. Um, that's all.
All right. Dealing, I guess, dealing with your point of order. Um, consistent with past practice as well as the opinion of, um, city solicitor Brian Riley dated November twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen, uh, the processes for the Ways and Means Committee to narrow the candidates down in executive session and then consistent with law, uh, to, uh, refer those, uh, narrowed, the narrowed field to the counsel. And to quote his words, um, "Finals may be referred to the city council for interview in open session after which the counsel votes the appointment." So that's what we've done in the past, um, and that's what, uh, Brian Riley's opinion says from two thousand and sixteen. So I do believe that the, uh, motion is properly before the counsel that's being discussed right now. Is there anything additional that you would like to?
No, that's, that's okay. I can understand that. But what we did, um, being on the last committee, uh, choosing the clerk and the assistant clerk the last time, we did check references. Uh, all three of us took, took a particular person and, and went with the, with questions and in the community and checking the references. So, I mean, I just have a little bit of a concern in not checking references on anybody we hire. Um, you know, so, you know, to quickly hire someone without, without checking references, uh, is an issue to me. That's all.
Okay. Thank you very much, Counselor.
I'm not saying there's anything wrong. I'm not saying there's anything wrong, but I just think when you look at what's happening in Boston, it's happening everywhere that, that, um, you know, employees aren't checked. That's all.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Counselor, uh, Frida. I appreciate that. Uh, is there any other counselor that wishes to, uh, weigh in at this juncture of the motion?
This is Counselor Charlotte Fozef.
Counselor Charlotte Fozef, you have the floor.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, I, I don't want to repeat, um, you know, prior comments, but I, I just did want to weigh in. I think, um, I'd like to thank the Ways and Means Committee for their work. They did, um, bring three very strong candidates, um, to us this evening. And I think the assistant city clerk's job, it's, it's a, um, it's a very tough job. It's a very busy office. There's, it's, it's very, very important and it's a tough position to really be able to learn on the job. Um, and that's why, I mean, I, I, I agree with what's been said. Um, I think experience is very, very important in this matter. Um, I do want to thank everybody for coming. I would encourage, I think we had, you know, three solid candidates, three really good candidates, and I would hope that the, um, you know, depending on how this goes this evening, that, um, any one of the three, you know, who, who doesn't, um, you know, get the appointment, I would encourage them to, um, you know, keep an eye out on the city's website and apply for something else in the city because I think they all had really good skills and, and backgrounds that would be beneficial to the city. Um, a question regarding references, I, I understand, um, having been involved in hiring other folks, that I think reference checking is very important. And I guess the question would be, and maybe this is the question for you, uh, Mr. President, could we, uh, vote on an appointment subject to confirming references? You know, assuming that the references are going to check out, can we do that?
Well, um, I know that there are some, um, basic things in the employment process. You know, there's a drug screen and all those other things I think that people have to go through. But I, if we, I think the motion before us is, is to hire, um, you know, it, it would require an amendment to that motion, I think, uh, procedurally. But, um, you know, I, I don't know who, who's the arbiter of those, that reference check after the fact. Um, you know, depending on how it comes back. Um, you know, I, 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 I think we, I don't want to, I don't want to get into the weeds with it. I appreciate the comment and the concern, but, you know, we, uh, we do have a, a motion on the floor, um, by Counselor Cormier. If, if the concern is strong enough, I mean, you know, we, we, we could vote the motion down. Uh, but, um, I, I think, uh, you know, we, we need to, um, move forward with this motion at this juncture. I'm not sure that answers your question, but that's about the best I can do right now. Any other discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Dombrowski.
Yes, Counselor Dombrowski.
I, I just want to say that I, uh, I, I could have supported, um, either of these three candidates. I, I thought, I thought each candidate, um, brought a lot of, uh, strengths to the table and, and each candidate would have been, um, an excellent, uh, employee or an excellent assistant city clerk. Uh, you, you know, it appears that the, the experience factor is, is winning the day and I, I, I can certainly understand that. Um, but to, you know, Ms. Ellis and, and Ms. Fernandez, uh, I, I would, uh, encourage you to, um, you know, to continue to apply for these types of positions. Uh, and there, there are ways to gain that experience. Um, I know Ms. Fernandez had volunteered at a, at a, a couple of elections and, um, there are other ways to gain that experience. And I would, uh, encourage them to, to endeavor to do that because I, I was very impressed, um, with, with all of their backgrounds, um, and all of their presentations. And, uh, uh, you know, it's a difficult choice and I'm, I'm sorry that, um, we can only choose one person. Um, but I did want to weigh in on that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Dombrowski. Uh, Counselor Charlotte Fozef, going back to your, uh, question after a little bit of thought. Um, I would, I would suggest to Madam Clerk, um, would you object to having, um, the HR department, uh, do a reference check if in fact the, the vote, uh, is in the affirmative on Ms. Reardon? Would, would you object to having the HR department do a reference check and report it to you? And if you have any difficulties, uh, bringing it, uh, would you be willing to bring that back to the counsel for our consideration?
Absolutely.
Okay. Counselor Charlotte Fozef, does that, um, help a little bit with your concern? And Counselor Frida?
Oh, sure does. Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. You're welcome. Uh, any additional discussion?
Uh, yeah, Mr. President.
Yes, Counselor Frida.
Oh, go ahead. Whoever, whoever else wants to speak is fine. Counselor Cormier, go right ahead.
I think I heard, I think I heard Counselor Frida first. Counselor Frida, you have the floor.
Um, I, I, I'm just going to follow up on what the counselor objects to make usually. Um, mentioned, uh, the other member of Ways and Means. Um, and, and I'm sure the advantage that the three of us on Ways and Means had were the initial interview, um, which just really brought these people forward, um, there. Um, and, and I'll agree with, with the other counselor that all three of them bring, uh, I'm getting a lot of feedback. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you cut something down?
Yes. Let me meet a couple of people and see if that helps. Hold on one moment. I'm sorry.
All right. There, there we go. No, it, it's still repeating after me, I guess.
Is this better?
Yes, that's good. Thank you. Um, you know, the, the, all three do have, um, diversified backgrounds, but all three of them, uh, bring something to the table that is unique to the position. And I think any of the three certainly could have done the job. Um, uh, those of us that are involved in real estate, um, know that, um, they get hammered in a law office and, and Ms. Ellis is absolutely correct in, in stating the last-minute deadlines and trying to keep everybody happy when everybody's screaming to get the closing done by the date on the purchase of sale. Um, and that's not an easy thing to do. And, and patience is certainly a virtue in that regard. Um, so, you know, deadlines and customer service is certainly key on that one. Um, Ms. Fernandez, I just thought was, um, just really very strong in my book. Um, I, I think that, I really feel that today's, um, today's day and age, I think we should be, uh, um, sensitive to, uh, another bi, uh, multilingual person in that office that has devoted her whole life to the city of Lomond Street for the most part, helping people, uh, find housing and, um, servicing the public. And, um, certainly Ms. Reardon is, is coming from a town clerk position to, to becoming an assistant clerk. Um, I, I just had a little bit of a concern about that. Um, and, you know, I think she explained it, but I still have a concern about that. And, um, I, I just felt that we should have had a little more discussion. I understand the counselor brought it forward and we're going to be voting on it, but, um, I, I don't think I'm ready for that step yet. So, um, thank you for, uh, I'll have my comments then. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselor have, uh, any discussion on this motion?
Yes, uh, Counselor, uh, Feckley.
Thank you, Counselor Feckley. You have the floor.
Thank you. So I'm going to be echoing and reiterating much of what, um, my, uh, fellow community members have just indicated. Uh, when we brought these three candidates forward, uh, you know, we, we, we all did feel that, uh, any one of them could, would be a good fit in the city clerk's office. Um, Ms. Ellis, working for, uh, as a paralegal for all these years, you know, we, uh, anybody that has worked for a lawyer's office and knows anything about working in a lawyer's office knows, um, how, how hardworking you need to be and how you have to be, have so much attention to detail and deadlines, et cetera. Um, Ms. Fernandez, one of the things that really impressed me about her was her passion and compassion, um, for the public and especially, um, you know, a diverse population in need, uh, explaining to them as, as long as it took so that they would be satisfied, um, with the answers. Um, I saw her as a personality that would fit very well into that office. Um, Ms. Reardon, of course, her experience, especially with elections, um, is hard to overcome as, uh, as, as a candidate that doesn't have that experience. Um, uh, but also Ms. Reardon, certainly she has all the qualifications. And I can see her, uh, in that office as well, working toe-to-toe with Caitlin. So, um, you know, I'm pleased that we have, uh, presented these candidates to you and I am looking forward to seeing what the disposition is from the entire counsel. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Feckley. Is there any other counsel that wishes to, uh, comment on the motion? Okay, I'm going to relinquish the chair, uh, to Madam Vice President, um, so I can be heard personally. If you wouldn't mind for a moment, taking the chair, Madam Vice President?
I will.
Thank you very much. Um, if anything, um, over the last year, if we've learned anything over the last year, we've learned as a result of the COVID-nineteen pandemic, uh, how fragile government, uh, is. And, um, it has been, as we all know, a, a difficult, uh, year, a difficult process. Our next meeting will mark, uh, Our next meeting will mark one year, meeting virtually, something we never, none of us ever envisioned even as recently as last January. We all know that there was, at one time, we literally had to close physically the clerk's office, and that made it obviously very difficult for citizens who are used to getting documents like birth certificates and death certificates physically at that office. We made do. The mayor chipped in with some of his staff, people worked from home, the clerk worked from home. It was a difficult couple of weeks and a difficult process as it has been all year. I think we've been presented, but with a good slate of candidates, all very qualified women. And I too feel like a lot of the other councilors that, you know, they are all skilled and have strengths that are an asset to whoever employs them. But it is hard to deny Ms. Riordan's experience, and it's hard to deny how valuable that could be and is at this time, especially with what's going on in the world, and especially what's going on, you know, specifically with city government and local government. It's trying. And God forbid, if something occurred again in that office or with our city clerk, the experience could be invaluable. And that's why I think this is a very critical decision. We are all hopeful, as we have been for the last several months, that we will continue to make progress in the fight against this virus, and someday we all look forward to getting back to meeting in person in our chambers, and I look forward, like all of you, to that day. And thank you, all of you. I am indebted, as council president, to all of you for your cooperation under these very difficult circumstances, and I think we've managed to keep things moving. We've issued permits, we've held hearings, we have made government work as difficult as it has been, and this process is an example of that. So I want to thank you all for participating in the process and doing your job with great diligence. Again, thank you. I am finished. Councilor Feckley, thank you very much. Is there any other member of the council that has any closing comments before I take a roll call on this? Okay, starting with Councilor Frida.
No, this is certainly not anything personal, but nay.
Okay, Councilor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Feckley?
Yay.
Councilor Angelini?
Yay.
Councilor Oringer?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. If I've recorded that vote correctly, the vote is eight to one in favor, the motion passes. Congratulations, Ms. Riordan. Okay, I don't believe we have any additional or old business, unless someone wants to correct me. Okay, and is there anybody that has anything that they want to mention for the community calendar? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that.
Okay, I got Councilor Shalfo Zephyr, and is that a second, Councilor Cormier?
Yes, yes.
All those in favor of adjourning, please say yay. Yay?
Yay.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned by a vote of nine to zero. Once again, thank you very much, all. Good night.